Everyone, thank you for showing up tonight. Is there any agenda additions or deletions?
Yeah, one, well, maybe two additions possibly. First at one, we were gonna have an executive session to talk about the personnel issues that we've had the discussions about before. And then there was something to do with Mr. Potter.
Yeah, we wanted to follow up with just some concerns or some, excuse me, questions that had been raised about the solid waste, but they're of a delicate nature and need to be, at least initially, in executive session.
Well, we can always do it from the standpoint of information that would be harmful to the town if it got out inaccurately or whatever. And is Mr. Potter here or gonna be here?
He is here.
He is here?
He's here.
Well, I didn't see you there back there. Hi. Okay, so those two items on the end, I think.
And I'll second the motion.
Yep.
All right, there's a motion made, been seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And where do we wanna add that to?
Just before adjournment.
Yeah, after, after the concerns.
All right. Let's see, approval of last minutes from June 9th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Are hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, sounds good.
Well, you didn't second, we did a second on the revision to the agenda. I'm not sure that we called a vote on it, did we?
Thought we did.
We did.
Okay, just double checking.
This table is starting to lean that way a little, George.
Probably.
All right, highway, the road commissioner isn't here. He's had some personal issues that he's dealing with, family issues, so he's not here tonight.
Mr. Chairman, on that note, I think as a member of the board and the whole board, I'm sure extends our sympathies to selectmen Ruane and the loss of his mother, who was longtime Clarendon resident, and certainly wish them peace at this time.
I think that, you know, is there any members from the audience attending have any comments about that? I know a lot of you folks knew the Cash Ruane family for a long time. Thanks for bringing that up, Bob. All right, did he have anything that he wanted to bring up to the public?
No, he did not.
Okay, sounds good. Approval of select board warrants?
They're right here.
All right, guests. Does anybody want to speak? I guess not. All right, public comments, any public comments?
Actually, Bob, I think this would be a good time for this.
Wanna state, state your name for the record?
Robert Underhill.
Okay.
Or anything else you, any other version which you use.
Underwood, underwear, who knows?
Exactly. But, okay, the Stark Society is, you know, sending an application to the state to hopefully get one of those historic marker signs that you see here that are everywhere around the state for Clarendon Springs. And we've never applied for one before, but part of the process is we're supposed to share theoretical what the sign would say with the select board. The state does the final wording. If they approve putting one of those markers there, the state does the final wording, but we have to suggest something. And we're severely limited in how many characters it could be, you know, logically, just putting so much on a sign, you know, that, you know, if you could have two pages typed, it would be much easier to tell the history than it is in the, you know, a couple sentences. So at any rate, you have, you know, something that barring any other changes is what I was gonna send them to. And the process is rather lengthy. It's like, it takes at least eight months, you know.
Just wanna read it, you want me to read it for the record?
Yeah.
So for the record, it's, the proposal from the Historical Society is this for Clarendon Springs. Clarendon Springs therapeutic mineral waters brought visitors seeking relief from their ailments beginning in the 1780s, and the decades that followed it grew into a major summer destination, drawing many from the northeast cities and from southern states, primarily from Virginia and the Carolinas. They came for the mineral waters and to escape the summer heat, major hotels included the American House, Great Green Mountain House, and the Clarendon House, which is now a national historic registered property. The Civil War saw the loss of the southern visitors and closure of the hotels until the war's end. Post-war Clarendon Springs was again a thriving resort, but by the late 1800s, its clientele's tastes and options had shifted elsewhere. I'll make a motion that we go ahead and give the Historical Society our approval on their application.
Second.
Any further discussion? Do you have anything else that you wanna?
Ah, no.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Sounds like, sounds like you got some work.
Well, it's nothing ventured, nothing gained. You know, the state recently did a bunch of signs, new, a new batch of signs around the state, and that's what kinda jogged the idea. And Clarendon Springs as a village is, you know, certainly suitable.
Where would you locate that sign?
Tony Costatino was suggesting in the triangle, the corner of Walker Mountain and Clarendon Springs Lane, but if that doesn't work, you know, just a little further north, you know, sort of in front of the hotel itself, you know, and again, the state settles, you know, that, yeah.
I just wanted to know if you guys had talked about that location of that at all?
Just with the property owner, because that's, you know, they include something from, the application requires the property owners in endorsement.
All right, any concerns from the public on this? Good job. Nice work. Consider a burial at Chippenhook Cemetery, you must speak to that.
Yep. So in the McLown plot, one of the grand dollars, Angela, I can't remember the names, Kellogg or Ketchum. Approached, Kellogg approached me last week about adding a name, her husband's name, to a stone that's already set in place. She's, she's on the stone and her mother's on the stone. It would be a third name on that one stone. The rules as written and adopted by you folks four years or so ago allows for three cremations in one plot or a full burial and two cremations. I already told, I already told them to go ahead and they can start the process of getting somebody out there and putting the name in, her husband's name. The reason, one of the reasons why I'm bringing it up tonight is so we could get it in the select board minutes, I could get a copy of those 15 years from now. She wants to do this historical knowledge, we're all, none of us are here, she's got a record of it, maybe you, Bob.
That's the kid, right?
There's a historical record that she has that this was discussed and approved. There's, it is, like I said, it's the McLown plot, there's three stones in there already, and this would be a third one on.
So we're just authorizing them to add it to the existing stone?
Right, in that we've allowed for the burial to be there.
Regardless of whether it's?
I'll make that a motion.
An urn or a coffin. Regardless of whether it's an urn or a coffin.
It has to be an urn. They understand it's gonna be cremation, there's already one burial in there.
All right.
Okay, so we'll make a motion that we authorize this burial of an urn at Chippenhook Cemetery and the addition of the name to the stone.
We wanna mention the name in the minutes?
McClellan, so McClellan plot.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Oh, he's ahead of me again.
He beat ya.
Yeah, he's gotta be. All right, so there's been a brief discussion. We have a motion on the board. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, good job, Kim. All right, letters of interest for Vacated Planning Commission C.
No, you skipped them.
Oh, yeah, but I didn't have, oh, no, I did. Jesus Christ, I gotta get my glasses fixed.
Do you wanna give us an update, 'cause this is really, we're looking for an update tonight.
Right, on, on the contract. There's been some movement, I mean, there's been improvement on the mowing. There has been improvement. Though, there's been some improvement on the leaf removal from the spring. The north fence here has not been cleaned out yet. I've been at them since April 2nd to do this. One of, one of the reasons I'm, I'm kinda hesitant is the next lowest bid, $7,500 difference.
Yeah.
So, you know, do I wanna die on a hill in the Clarendon, do we want, you know, the Clarendon tax pay is taken, you know, over $7,500? I, I'm willing to continue, you know, their, their contract ends June 30th, new one starts July 1st. I'm willing to go forward with that, with that contract with them, and if things don't prove the contract reads, we can terminate at any time and, and then go with somebody else.
Well, in my opinion, if you're willing to take that approach from the standpoint of you've seen some improvement, I would guess that you're hoping it'll continue.
I mean, the, the issue is there's a clean up and remove, and remove means take all of the cemetery, you know, the debris, and that was, was what was not done. Now, I understand the son wasn't working with the crews this year, who was the father early on. The son is back with the crews, you know, I've been in touch with him. Hopefully, there will change going forward, but.
But you have seen improvement, is what you're saying, aside from that issue?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
So we only need to officially authorize Kim to execute the contract, right? That's at this point. So I'll go ahead and make that a motion that we already, that we authorize Kim to?
He established.
Establish the contract from July 1 to June 30 of next, for next, this next fiscal year.
Second.
All right, is there any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, I don't have to do all this.
Just, I got one addition to that.
Sure.
We, we've started the process of signs, and we've got four right there in that corner. So we're gonna start be putting signs up, nameless cemetery in a year, and it'll start with the Flats, the Marsh, the West Clarendon, and the Spafford.
Are you gonna put, is there posts already established up there to mount these on, or?
No, I have to, I have to go get the posts.
Okay.
I'll have to get the post before June 30th. It'll be on this year.
I'm not sure Heidi's giving you that much time.
No, no, I get the post before June 26th.
Of course.
There, June 26th, that's it, June 26th.
All right.
So you're gonna be prepared to post these signs?
Yes.
Good.
Isn't it fun having George here? All right, do you have help? You have people volunteering to give you a hand with that, or?
He tried to recruit me this morning.
It's, it's gonna be one of those things where I can do it, you know?
People will be all involved.
He has got some excellent unskilled assistants ready to help him.
Okay, so you're holding your hand up?
Pretty much.
You know, you can rent a really nice post hole digger from Toolcraft that's on wheels, and it works really, really well.
And Shelley?
No.
Looking for something to do.
Thank you. I, I was planning on renting a post hole digger and doing all four cemeteries one afternoon and resew the holes.
You got a tractor?
I have a tractor too.
Then take my, take my post hole digger.
It's getting into, getting into this issue.
And one of the wheels?
But thank you, though.
And one of the wheels, we were able to wheel it around with one person, so.
That worked.
I told him I had one of those. I, I have a manual post hole digger, and he didn't want it.
What did you go through? Nothing, it just broke.
We're at those, we're getting, we're getting a little further down this road.
We're off track here.
I think, yeah, I think.
Well, thanks. Who made those signs for you?
Tello Printing.
Okay.
Here, all up.
Yeah, for the record, at least one of them.
Oh, yeah, cool.
Oh, yeah, that's good.
What are they on? What's the?
Really?
Yeah.
Nice job. All right, moving right along. Letters of interest for Vacated Planning Commission C. And we have two here. John, do you wanna speak to that? Didn't I see John walk in here?
Sure.
He's hiding way up in the back.
I came in late, yeah. So we had two people express interest, Dan Pankowski and Eric Engelhardt.
Yep.
We had a, we were informed that our first attempt at recommending someone was not done properly, so we had another special meeting where we voted three to two to recommend Eric for the vacant position.
So it's up to the select board now to?
Well, Eric's here, I think I saw him. Maybe he'd like to say something, I guess he.
Hi, I'm Eric, moved here, Clarendon about six years ago now. Heidi, my, is my neighbor, you know, most people know Heidi, she's on the board, she recommended that, she asked if I could join, and I've, you know, been here long enough to think that I can warrant a younger opinion on the town and its growth, and also have the opportunity to learn from people such as John and Don here, you know, Don and Bronson here on the, on the committee already, so I just kinda wanna, you know, my goal is to help out the town, you know, we wouldn't be able to survive if the young people weren't around, and we all see what's happening in Vermont, and I love Vermont, that's why we moved here, so we wanna, and love Clarendon. My wife and I wanna make sure that it succeeds in the long run, so that's one of the reasons why I wanna join.
Well, that's good. Bronson, do you have a comment?
There's been some, I guess a couple of controversy on the planning commission. I have been pushing Danny Pankowski, who, as all of you guys know, he's a third generation Clarendonite, knows everybody knows what's going on in town, has been a selectman until he got voted off. So my recommendation to the planning commission was we didn't need to have this second vote, and my recommendation to the select board is, I think Danny did a really good job. I have personal concerns, and I don't know Eric except two or three times I've met him in meetings, but I really don't wanna see, I'm gonna use the term flatlanders even though it's inappropriate, controlling how the tongue goes for it, done.
I know, I first get on your opinion of me, 'cause I'm a flatlander.
That was because you were hanging around with Danny Doolittle.
That's another story. Anybody wanna just make the motion on the board?
Sure, I'll move that we follow the recommendation by the planning commission and appoint Eric.
There's a segment to that motion for discussion. I'll second that. All right, is there any further discussion?
Not for me.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Just for the record, I'll say aye as well. Good luck.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Hard fought, foul. Long vote.
Boy was it big, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was.
So now Bronson, your job is to break him in right.
Remember when you broke me in, you gave me a couple of lefts and wanted to break?
Whatever. You guys have a good evening.
All right. Thank you for coming. Michael Pel, to discuss cleaning bid.
Hey, I've been here, I've been to Vermont since I was one, okay?
Yes.
Every year.
I just wanted to bring up the cleaning. My name is Mike Pelphy, case none of you know me. I've been a resident of Clarendon for 40 years. My family has cleaned the town hall for pretty much that whole time, so it was a little surprising that the cleaning was put up to bid. There were, however, some things left out of the bid that should reflect pricing on the cleaning for this. Number one, the bid did not include the library for the Grange building, and there's no mention of trash collection, but primarily, I was just kinda taken aback because we have done the building for so long. The place feels like home to us as far as, you know, we've been here for that long. My mother lives right across the street, I live up the hill, you know, we've always, you know, I have a company with employees, so, you know, we feel that we can adequately address the cleaning needs of the town and would like to continue to do so.
Any members concerned?
I got a quick question.
Sure.
So you, you're not in charge of the Grange Hall or the library, then? You're not, you're not doing that there, then?
We do both of those buildings. Yeah, we do the library, Grange building.
Up, upstairs and down?
Yes. And we've always done the library since its inception in the building.
George?
If I, if I can jump in there on the issue of the Grange and the library, I would guess that the hallway and elevators in the downstairs bathroom, which is not necessarily part of the library, would be contained, contained in cleaning that area, which for the library, I would guess the cleaning duties would be dusting in maybe a wastebasket or something of that nature.
And washing the floors, you know, just generally keeping the place tight.
And of course, somebody could make the argument that the library has funds, so they should do that portion themselves, and that could be a, a direction to go in, but from the standpoint of the fact that the library works on very limited funds, that that little bit can't take a huge amount of time or money to get that little area cleaned, I would ask your opinion on that.
Yeah, it's really, I mean, it's lightly used, as you know, it's only open a few days a week, so we did in our bid include a price with and without the library included.
Thank you.
However, nobody else had that opportunity because it wasn't clearly stated in the bid.
Thank you.
I just also wanna make the board aware that the reason that the library was not included in the bid sheet, well, that was a directive given by the community center chair from the community center board.
Got it.
So that was purposeful.
Thank you.
It was my oversight to not list the removal of receptacles in that.
Trash receptacle.
Trash receptacles, but we, we did feel it was important to put it out to bid simply because of the need for a contract. We just feel that contracts are essential to business, and they give you a written record of agreed commitments, and we also added the addition of cleaning windows to the list of duties, which was new.
And you had that as, as well as part of your quote?
Yeah, that's including my quote.
Okay.
One thing that was also discussed as far as trash and recycling removal is the ability for the town, since we do have our own transfer station, to provide whoever is going to clean for us with a transfer station dump card to be used for?
Yep.
The town hall itself.
Does that include the Grange as well, or?
It can, that would be up to the board, but that's how we figured we could, at least with this next fiscal year's contract, and then next year, we can make sure, in the fall, when we put it out for bid for the following fiscal year, we can make sure to add trash and recycling into that.
Heidi, did you say that's going to include reci, taking the recycling now too?
Yes, sir. Bob has graciously taken the recycling for us for as long as I can remember.
What's, what's the official name of your company?
Commercial Building Services.
Okay.
And currently, we've been taking the trash to the transfer stations, just part of the.
I guess my only comment too, and I, I understand sometimes, and this has come up a few different times since I've been on the board, not specific to cleaning, but specific to other things that have just been done for a long time, and good business practice is a bid process. I mean, in the business I run, we go to bid every three years pretty much on everything just to make sure that we're in the ballpark, so that's, that's, I guess, my feedback on that, is that as far as bid process, bid process is good business process.
It's good business, yeah, keeps everybody honest.
So I know that when the board was approached about this, and the fact that we had a fiscal year coming up, and again, two things, getting bids to make sure we're still competitive and getting it into a contract cycle like everything else, like our mowing is, I think that's the, the main feedback to give to you. That's why, that's why we're doing it. But I also will state that at least I'd had heard from at least a couple individuals that there had been concerns that had not been addressed, and that there had been messages left and not responsive, and that there had been things overlooked, and that that was a concern. So I know as one board member, I had received that feedback before the bid process started, just so, all the cards are on the table.
I understand, I don't recall getting anything, usually if, I, I come in to see Gloria every so often, and she'll say, can we do this, and we always take care of it. That's always been the way my company's operated, you know, we've been in business for 50-plus years, and just the town has been part of our business for all those years, so I appreciate the opportunity we've had to do business with the town. However, I do recommend that if you do make it a contract, don't do a one-year term, those are horrible. They really are, it just, it just ends up getting chopped and chopped and chopped just because, so, just a thought.
We, we got three bids here. You guys looked at them?
I haven't seen them yet. I haven't looked.
It's, here. Heidi, you wanted to settle this today?
Well, your meeting starts on July 1st.
Yeah.
The last meeting before then, so I think it would all be over.
So we've got, just make sure, we've got three bids, is that correct?
Three bids.
Three, okay.
You've been working here in the town how long?
Forty years. You've been here building mine. Yeah, you did a good job.
The?
We've been around for a long time.
Forty years.
And we, we've, we've got quite a little.
That was before, that was before brooms and stacking.
Yeah. One elector, so you can find this. Yeah, we have one, this is one of those, so you say.
That's the one, that's the current.
That's his.
Yeah, no, this one.
Who's this one?
That's not his, here's his.
Who's this, I don't see any name.
It says right along the bottom, George.
Oh, okay, yep, thank you. Getting old, I guess.
Rumor has it. So am I.
Okay. What do we got there? Thank you.
All right. When you get done with that, George, can you pass it back? Cause I, we didn't flip to the back page to look at that.
With the?
Cause it's the, it's the two separate ways.
Yeah.
I just wanna look at that again.
Sure.
This is coming back to, I don't know any.
That's, this is, this is a thousand more.
We had every one.
Okay, so?
You had the third one?
It's that way. I gave you two, three.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
Okay, so that's the Grange.
Trust me, I wouldn't, I wouldn't keep one out of your hands. Trust me, I wouldn't, I wouldn't keep one out of your hands.
Okay. Those are all hundred.
Yeah.
So it's between these two.
They're way too high.
Him and Heidi, I presume you reviewed the...
If we total up this page and the other page.
And the guys have a recommendation?
So three, eighteen.
Thirty, uh, forty-four, or four thousand four hundred?
Yeah.
And this is... Now that's three more, oh, no, wait a minute, there's more than that.
Yeah.
That was your recommendation?
Yes. This is, this is your low bid.
I just don't wanna stay with him.
Yeah, I think so.
You want to stay?
I think, gotta wait a little time. What are you doing, like, is this just for one year right now? And then we can do an, we can do three or something like that?
This present contract that you have in here, is that for one year, or?
It's for as long as you may determine the contract.
So, but that would be a yearly payment, even though it's a one-year or three-year? It's the same cost?
Yeah, that's the yearly payment.
Yeah.
I didn't see where that other one was from. Were they playing it also? They're rolling, yeah.
All right, anybody wanna make a motion?
Um, so, are you, you looked everything over, George? Where, where are you at?
Well, obviously, there's only two possible choices, but I'm not sure I clearly understood the difference with, with or without the library. Is that what he was trying to say here?
That's on the back page.
Yes. So this is the difference, is here. So it looks like this is the lowest, isn't it?
Uh, no, the other one is.
Oh, it is, okay. No, I'm, go ahead and make your motion. That's all I needed to know.
You wanna stay, though? Or do you wanna go with the low? I'd hate to go with the low bid. You know, just in business, I've always found that you get what you pay for. Do you wanna make the motion then with a caveat that there be an improvement over the next year in communication? With who? With him. With him, and the people that are, the, the people that work here and, and closer communication. That we'd like to see an improvement.
Do we have any caveats in that contract?
Not very good speaker. Go for it. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Okay. We're gonna have a motion being made.
I'd like to make a motion that, um, we continue with the same company that we've been using, with, um, contingencies, that there's a little more communication between, between both parties, I guess. Um, you know, communication does always have to be negative. It, um, it can be positive too, so.
I'd like to make a recommendation to, uh, Mike, sorry. Uh, in terms of maybe spending some time to make sure they understand exactly what the concerns were, and sort of making sure that the communication line, or whatever it might need to be, is there. So that's what I have to say about it.
Is there a second to the motion?
Did you second it?
No, I did not.
I, sure, I'll second it.
Okay. For discussion. Is there any further discussion? My concern is, do we wanna, uh, discuss right now the three-year or just the one-year?
Um, I would like to respectfully recommend that we do a one-year. We do that with all of our other contracts, so that would be consistent with what we currently do as a town.
I have no problem with that.
Yeah, I would say for this year, and especially since we're giving opportunity for improvement as well.
Yes.
Then we can go from there.
Then we can go from there.
Yeah. All right, so the motion made, was seconded, we've had brief discussion. Uh, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? For the record, aye.
Aye.
Aye, 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 aye. Okay.
Can I just say one more thing?
Yes.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. I do think that in business, communication is very important. I encourage that with all my customers to, you know, I can't address your needs if I don't hear them. So I appreciate an open line of communication. We're always willing to take care of whatever needs to be done.
Mike, before you leave, can you please leave us your direct phone number? We've left messages with the business phone.
That's probably why, yeah.
And don't hear back. And I know Gloria has tried to reach out to Judy as well, and
Here, give me a piece of paper.
So that would be appreciated.
I'll place the sign.
Uh, it should be right here.
Okay.
I'll place this.
No, uh, it's, it's in Kim's hands now. We don't have to do anything.
Okay. Moving right along. All right, we have a fireworks permit. You wanna read that, Rob?
Uh, it's Mike Lee up at Misty Meadows, um, depending on weather, the weekend of Fourth of July. I don't think we've had any issues with this address before, so I'll go ahead and make a motion that we authorize the chair to approve.
Second. And it's just the chair signing?
It's just the chair, yep.
Okay. All right, with motion made, seconded, uh, a very brief discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Uh, airport restaurant lease advertisement. You wanna speak to that at all, or you want me to?
Um, I know you're the one that wanted it on the agenda, and you were interested in, on the airport's behalf of putting the lease advertisement on our website. Personally, I think that opens up everybody wanting to advertise their businesses on our website, and we do have the Clarendon Town Facebook page that I think we could easily put it there instead.
I, I would guess that the Facebook page might get more viewing, I don't know, but that's sort of the...
Do, I guess my question is, we do have business links on our, on our website. Is the airport one of the ones that's linked there?
The airport is here, yeah.
Okay, so they can already go and probably find it anyway?
Right, right.
So, okay. Yeah, I, I, I agree with you, I think it gets a little dicey when we start. I mean, I know we put, like, links that they can click from our website and go to businesses in town, but
Right.
actually advertising on the town page could get dicey.
All right, so it appears as though, um, the board is saying that we'll just look at a Facebook.
Yeah, I mean, certainly the Facebook page could be posted, and it's, in a way, it's our, they can get to it from our website, cause they can click on the airport, and anybody watching this or hearing this can do that too.
Well, I have a meeting tomorrow with the airport committee, and I just wanna, uh, when I speak to this issue, I just want them to know that we prefer the Facebook.
Did any word ever come out, just out of curiosity, since this is on the, there was a restaurant, like, two years ago, three years ago, that supposedly had it all tied up and was gonna be moving in and everything else? What happened to them?
Well, the, uh, when they looked over what the state was proposing
Yeah.
it was unbelievable. It was...
So they ba, they backed out then?
Yes.
Okay.
Cost-wise. However, now, because the transportation committee has, is, airports in the state stand alone from the transportation road folks. So now they came up with a new cost that are way less than...
Much different.
Yes.
Okay.
So that's why, yeah, they're gonna consider it, and I've been informed that a couple folks have already, uh, shown an interest after they got some new information. So I'll, after tomorrow's meeting, I should have a
More information?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I just wanted to...
I was just curious.
Yeah, I just wanted to check with you guys, uh, whether or not we put it on our town site or Facebook site. I didn't even know there was a Facebook site.
Yeah.
Geez, you're getting old, that's all.
I know.
I hear that a lot.
You gotta move into modern times.
Old business.
This, I think would be under concerns for town officers.
Well, what, what do you mean?
If you're talking about this, I would think you'd like Kim to speak about it, which she could do now, I guess.
Yes, it came to my attention that the Mill River Unified School Board has an addition at the end of their agendas where it discusses rules and instructions regarding public comments at meetings.
Mm-hmm.
And so I typed up a little sample of something I thought we might be interested in adding to the end of our agendas.
Well, you wanna read what you had typed up? Seeing that you were the author.
Uh-huh. Sure. Public comment instructions. Members of the public have the right to participate in public meetings. If you wish to speak during public input, please note that your time will be limited and must follow the below guidelines. A, before speaking, please state your full name and your town of residence. B, when you are informed by the chair that your time is up, you will be expected to yield to the next speaker. Speakers will have a minimum of three minutes to make their comments. C, public input is for receiving comment on items pertaining to this or past agendas. Public comment will not be used as a time for problem solving or reactions to comments made. We do take note of your comments as they help to inform the board's future actions. And finally, D, rudeness, ridicule, or profane language, lack of respect, and personal attacks are not acceptable behavior.
So that, now that's on the TV, so people...
So you're suggesting just to post it at the end of each agenda?
It's just like a little, yeah.
The disclaimers at the end?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm good with it. I'll make a motion that we authorize Kim to add that to the agendas.
Second. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Let the record show it was unanimous.
Thank you for your work, Kim.
Yeah, nice job. I'll put this right in my secret desk. All right, old business.
I think we're done with it.
Yeah, I don't think that's exactly what I said.
Yeah. Let me just look over some of the paperwork here. Okay. Uh, you wanna speak to the historic society for any reason relative to the school? No. All right, town officers and committee member report. Heidi?
Well, we're in the last week of the fiscal year, so anyone who has any invoices for me needs to get them in as soon as possible. Kevin? And, uh...
She's being polite too, Kevin.
And, uh, that's, that's what we're doing, working on closing down the fiscal year.
Okay. Do you have anything you wanna, Senator, committee-wise?
No, sir.
Okay. Bob, do you have anything historic? All right. Okay. Thank you, Kim. All right. Do we wanna have a selectman's concerns before we go into executive session?
I would say so.
Donnie?
Um, no, nothing yet. Mr. Chairman?
I don't have anything more tonight.
Me either.
Well, I, I don't really have, one thing, I just heard a little story about Mr. Underhill. Apparently, when he was younger, he was, he was studying at school, he was studying the pioneer days, and it suggested that he wanted to know how they made fire, and somebody informed him that they used a couple of sticks and rubbed them together. So I understood he went out and collected a whole bunch of sticks, and when he got done, he made a report for his school, uh, class that, uh, you can start a fire with two sticks as long as one of them is a match.
That's very good.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we have to...
Wait, Kim.
As John McKenna stated on the way out, that he was the one that wrote the addition to the agenda for the Mill River School Board's form. And I took it and simplified it to what we may need, but I wanted everybody to know that he had originally written it.
Okay, thank you. Somehow, I'm not surprised.
Yep. Dave's got his hand up.
Dave?
I don't know if this is the right place to put it in the agenda, but I was wondering about, did you make the appointments for, uh, the appointment for the, um, Transportation Council?
There was one made for you as the primary seat, but currently, there is no one for the
The university.
The alternate.
The alternate. And that was, that was informed to them today.
Yeah, that's all I care.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, so, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we enter into executive session and start with, uh, Mr. Potter and solid waste, and I don't think it's gonna take very long, and then we can transition to our other personnel situation.
You wanna invite Kim in or anything?
And I would say at the personnel time, I think we can invite Kim and Heidi to come join us, cause I think there's a couple things we're gonna need that are input on, but um, we'll start with the solid waste
Yep, yep.
and then we'll go from there, and I, I'm not gonna place a time limit because this could take us a while, so I don't wanna place us under a time limit.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it.[1773.12]